All right, you ready? I'll call the order, the committee of the whole for Tuesday, October 28th at 6:00 P.M. Let the record show that all persons are present with the exception of Alderwoman Fornie. All of the crop will be joining us here shortly. I'll make a motion to enter into executive session, discuss current litigation collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Law. I need a second?
Second.
Second by Kerry. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right, John, thumbs up if you can hear us? All right, we're gonna go ahead and continue. So we left that early. We are discussing PL on 11-25 to reschedule the November 11, 2025 meeting on the Oleane Common Council Tuesday, November 4th at 6:00 P.M. in the council chambers. This is one that we brought up, I'm sorry, this is one that we brought up because of just what it says, that next week the city is closed and we don't want to pay the city employees overtime to hold the council meeting. These meetings aren't that important, right? So we want to reschedule it and change it to the week prior, which is the next Tuesday. So any comments, questions on that? All right. Yep, JR?
Just because it's gonna tie into the one down lowers about challenging that code.
Yep.
Because as the code currently states that it's the second and fourth Tuesday of the month that stipulates those exact Tuesdays. So the other one is to change that to allow for that holiday thing. So if we can do that in the same meeting, then there shouldn't be an issue, correct, Bridgette?
I mean amend the code technically if you want to be able to change any other meetings. The code says the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. So if you want to do a different thing, you really should amend the code.
So when we come to the council paper, can we suspend the rules and move that one in front of others, John?
Yeah, so is that not work? Or does it have to be published first? So the ordinance one has to be published first, so we need to postpone this one or we just say we're not having a meeting next week is what you're saying?
I'm just telling you the code says, the code says it's supposed to be the second and fourth Tuesday.
Okay, so we have to look. All right, well, I'll do this. We can, I mean we could postpone this indefinitely because it's not possible to do this legally until the other is done. And then I guess we're gonna have to move the council meeting to another day that week, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday.
The...
Move to the 11th, right?
The...
We can't do it on the November 11th because that's a holiday.
Because it's the second and fourth Tuesday.
Technically can't change it. As soon as we can vote on the PL to change the code, it wouldn't be the 11th.
If this has never happened before ever, holidays never fell on Tuesdays?
No, they haven't changed them.
We just changed it. So what is the law of the council? Are we interested in changing it or are you guys interested in coming in on holiday and paying the city bill coming on holiday?
Why don't you just have a meeting on a Monday or Wednesday before or after?
Because the charter states you have to have it on a Tuesday.
Not the charter, the code, right?
The code.
Yeah.
Not the charter, the code.
Yeah, so our code says that we have to.
Past precedent, past precedents for the last 10 years has been if the holiday, if Christmas, whatever falls on that, it's in several lines. So before you move, will you move it?
Okay. I got your turn now, John. But I think everyone heard you.
Yeah, the past precedent, but...
So past precedents, we follow that.
Right, but the question is, if it doesn't fit with our code, what do we do then?
You guys do make the decision, I'm just telling you legally what your code says. The code says it's supposed to be the second and fourth Tuesday of the month.
So I'm not sure where we go here, but I would see that we should adjust the code to say, to allow us flexibility down the road.
Yeah, and that's coming up, we're gonna discuss that.
This would be the rule exception because I don't want to cause the city any expense by bringing people in on a holiday, but then in the future resolve that definitively.
Well, in fairness, the code does not say that the meeting has to happen in the council chambers or in the city building for that matter. What the code says is that we can select the time and place, not the date. And also, like I mentioned this about a month ago, so if this would have been done, we wouldn't be in this dilemma. Also, just because now that you know you're doing something wrong, past precedents doesn't negate that and say we continue to do the wrong. I can't go and break the code and mow my lawn into the street and then when codes comes to give me tickets, say, past precedents says I've always mowed my lawn into the street.
That's understandable, but when there's a problem, you gotta come up with a solution too. Solution is if it was mentioned a month ago, it should have been brought in as a PL a month ago. So we also need to cover this particular PL and decide what we're gonna do for next Tuesday or the Tuesday after because that is the true holiday that we're supposed to hold that meeting. So with that, I am perfectly fine, yep, Paul?
So could we not, since we are by code required, could we not convene and then adjourn? I mean, if that's the issue in fitting with the code, convene and then adjourn?
My thought process, and I want to get the feel of the council. My thought process is we've identified a problem, we are going to work on correcting that problem, but unfortunately we have to post it. Why not go ahead and continue and do this change and then moving forward after that? We ensure it doesn't happen because we hope that this particular PL will pass and that allow us to make the changes that we need to the code ordinance.
The other thing is the code calls for regular meetings will be held on those days, but special meetings may be called with three days' notice or 24, at least 24 hours' notice. So cancel the meeting for that day, we call a special meeting for another day that week. And that would meet both, that would meet the law and the intent.
Well, one, because we wouldn't meet.
But we would cancel the meeting on the 11th and hold a special meeting on another date. The regular meeting would be suspended, the special meeting would be held.
Well, it actually doesn't negate it, Joe. It says a regular meeting on the second for the charter calls for regulars and specials, they're two different.
It doesn't allow us flexibility is what we're saying. Like, that's what I'm hearing, it doesn't allow flexibility and we need to correct that. That's what I'm hearing anyways.
Okay, any other discussion on that one? But this will be a quick one.
It would be too.
All right, so we will bring this up for vote. I'll make the motion, you need a second?
Second.
Second by Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving that one for opposed by, I'm sorry, all opposed, there'd be Benyon. And we're moving that one to the next meeting, regular meeting. PL 115-25, authorize mayor to execute lump sum consultant agreement for the Oleane Airport. This design portion, there's gonna be multiple of these, this design portion is gonna be for the security gate improvement project. Mayor?
Yeah, John, are you prepared to talk about these? Oleane, I guess, Ken, what are these? So I guess to put these all together, there's a series of them for you to act on with CNS Engineering. They're reflective of the airport's capital improvement plan that's been submitted to the FFA, or FAA. And they, CNS has provided us a separate proposal for each one of the projects. And that's why you have a whole series of these actions that we're asking you for.
Okay.
The descriptions that you're reading, I think pretty much cover our self-explanatory and the work that is planned at the airport.
Okay, McColl?
And just for public to have a sense, this is all monies then that we become reimbursed for, right, through the airport, the federal, right?
I think we're, I think right now we're at 95% grants, 5% local, which is us and the county, is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
90% federal, 5% state, and 5% city. And we historically put in for $95,000 from the county, which helps towards our portion.
Is it state or county?
County, which one?
You said, you said 5% state, is it state or county, county, correct?
No, state.
Oh, yeah?
It's state, yeah.
So we share our 5% with the county?
Correct.
Correct.
We share the 5% with the county or we get $95,000 to help us supplement it?
We get $95,000 from the county that we can use towards our management.
Yeah, gotcha.
Still a quick question on this, I know we're gonna be jumping here, but is the city's portion for each one of these collectively over that $90,000?
That honestly I can't answer off the top of my head.
And we don't have any figures in here.
Correct, because it's 90% grant based, but I think that information should be provided.
Agreed.
So Mayor, do you have that information or...
I, I don't. We won't, well, actually we won't know that information because this is for CNS to, the engineering firm that will put out the bids and everything, so we won't know.
So they're gonna do, so this is just approving that portion of the project?
Yes.
These are all design contracts?
Okay.
With no cost attached to them?
For example, the first one, 115, the total cost is $32,000. 116 is... 96. 117 is... 90, I'm sorry. 80? 84, 90. 118...
He said 84, 90?
80,440, 90. 63, 118. 56, 8, 11.
What was that last one?
56, 8, 11.
And is that solely the cost for the consultant agreement? Before it goes out to bid?
Right, none of these are construction contracts.
And then we would also be then 5% of whatever that construction bid is?
That's my understanding of this.
64, consulting.
John, in case you wonder, McColl's figuring out the numbers.
So that's about $16,440, right? That's our 5% that would come from that.
16K, I'll just go on.
For, for this consultant piece?
Alderwoman?
Yeah, that's about what we said, 5% of $328,000, if my math is correct there.
Okay. All right, so any further questions on that particular one? All right, we're looking for sponsors. I'll sponsor the first of them, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by McColl, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to PL 116-25, again authorize mayor to execute lump sum consultant agreement between S, C and S Engineering Inc., City of Oleane, design portion of the automated weather observing system, AWOS project for the airport.
Who'll sponsor?
Who'll sponsor? All right, Kerry, a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then PL 117-25, authorize mayor to execute lump sum consultant with CNS Engineering Inc. This one is a design portion of terminal building septic improvements project. Need a sponsor for that? Sponsored by Anastasia, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by McColl, all in favor? All right, opposed? All right, that is moving forward. PL 118-25, again authorize mayor to execute cost plus fixed fee consultant agreement between CNS Engineering. This particular portion is for the automobile parking and lighting improvement project for the airport. I will make a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Kerry, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right. PL 119, to authorize mayor to execute cost plus fixed fee consultant agreement between CNS Engineering, the City of Oleane Construction Observation and Administration portion of the apron rehabilitation project at the City of Oleane Airport. Motion by McColl, can I get a second? Second by Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is moving forward. PL 121-25, to amend the City of Oleane Code of Ordinance, Section 2-38, to authorize date, time, and location of the regular common council meeting. By amend, this one we were just discussing briefly with the first one. Again, this is one that JR brought forward and there's some error, we're gonna fix it wrong that has been going on for multiple years. So JR, do you want to add anything else yet?
I don't think we need to talk about it anymore.
All right, you want a motion?
Yep.
All right, Ben you motion? I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, moving on to PL 123-25, authorize mayor to sign and submit a grant application to the Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program, SLCGP. Mayor?
We have Jerry's here, he'll tell you about this one.
Just to give you a real quick rundown, about a year or so ago, Jason and I signed up, there's this New York State Cybersecurity Group. We heard about it, signed up, and we actually got some of this CrowdStrike software that's like endpoint security, endpoint protection on our computers right now. We got for free from just being in this group. Basically what happened was they just, a week and a half ago, they announced this grant for multi-factor authentication devices. Basically, the grant just gives you, if you win the grant or if you're awarded the grant, it gives you devices that you can plug in as an added layer of security for logging into computers in the city building. With the grant, it's, there's no cost to us at all, there's no, we don't have to match anything up. It's just a matter of they give us, there's no money involved, they give us devices if we're awarded the grant. And basically, there's really not too much to it, the only thing that we have to do is there's reporting on our end for any grant and then the installation and training for us, for everybody that uses the devices. And basically the devices are, instead of just logging into our computers the way we normally do, it gives you a device that you need to log in to the device, or to the computer screen. It's just, it's an added layer of security and we've actually been, we have like cyber security groups, like the EPA, they recommend this. And we've been asked if we had it before and unfortunately due to costs, we've basically said no. But now we actually have a chance, should we be awarded this, where we will be receiving these devices for no cost, just to give us an extra layer of security. And again, EPA, other requirements for what we should have, so.
All right, any questions or comments?
Just a question, are they like cards with a chip in them that you put into a reader, much like the Cat Card?
They haven't specified what, we don't know if they're like a USB token or if it's something that has a number on it yet. They don't specify in the agreement yet, but it'll be something along those lines that we would need to use to lock it.
All right, any other questions or comments on that? All right, it's free.
Free?
Free, free, free. All right, I'll entertain sponsors. Sponsored by McColl.
I'll second.
Second by Kerry, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, I'm making a motion to adjourn, can I get a second? Second by Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? We are adjourned. All right, I like the call of order, the regular media common council for Tuesday, October 28th. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Benyon?
Here.
Alderwoman Kerry?
Here.
Alderwoman Fornie? Alderwoman McColl?
Here.
Alderwoman Crawford?
Here.
Alderwoman Anastasia?
Here.
And President Robinson?
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the vacation and the pleasure meeting.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite in justice, across...
All right, reading, correcting the poll in a minute, the previous meeting?
Regular meeting of the Oleane Common Council was held on Tuesday, October 14, 2025 at 6:45 P.M. President with Alderwoman Robinson, Benyon, Kerry, Fornie, McColl, Crawford, and Anastasia, none are absent.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, committee reports and unfinished council business?
None.
Communications from the mayor?
We have a proclamation for manufacturing month 2025, so Frank, would you read that, please?
Whereas the City of Oleane is proud of its many manufacturing sectors and corporate leaders who are reaching out to local community to grow candidates for the highly skilled jobs they need to fill their workforce. Whereas manufacturing is dependent on innovation and fresh approaches to fuel productivity and economic development, which in turn expands employment opportunities and boosts the standard of living and economic vitality. Whereas this year, CA DIDI, Catrargus Allegheny Dreamit Do-It, will provide two months of tours and activities celebrating Oleane's manufacturing base. Whereas the City of Oleane is supportive of the CA DIDI partnership between our local manufacturing sector and our schools that will provide the needed skills to our area's young people and keep them in the community. Now therefore, I, William J. Ailio, Mayor of Oleane, New York, USA, on behalf of the common council, do hereby proclaim October and November to be manufacturing months in the City of Oleane, New York, USA. And in testimony thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Oleane on this, the 28th day of October, 2025, for the City of Oleane, New York. Signed, William J. Ailio, Mayor.
Evelyn Sabini was here from Dream of Do-It, but she had to leave, so this proclamation will actually reproduce it and it goes out to all the manufacturers that she participates with, so we'll get that to her. Secondly, I am very pleased... Uh, secondly, I am very pleased to announce that on behalf, um, that uh, on behalf of Attorney General Pamela Monti, it is my pleasure to inform you that the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services, the cops office, has approved an application submitted by the city of Olean for an award under funding opportunity entitled twenty twenty-five, F Y twenty-five cops hiring program. This approval award is in the amount of two million fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars. Now this will enable us to hire six additional police officers. Uh, one of the officers has to be a veteran. The grant, grant is for salaries and fringe benefits for the six officers for a three-year period. So I want to thank Chief Richardson, uh, for his work in putting this grant together. Uh, we submitted it, it was a lot of work and uh, uh, but it's going to pay off. So this grant will run from uh, ten, one, twenty-five to nine, thirty, twenty, thirty. So we have a five-year period here to complete this. Uh, the officers that are gonna get hired here, so. These are additional officers. Uh, this is not, uh, they can't cover any current officers, so these will be new hires. So I just wanted to report that, that is just a wonderful thing. Um, I also want to report that we have uh, two new police officers, Patrolman Kyle Barr and Patrolman Taylor Grenal, who have both successfully graduated from the Alfred State Police Academy on October twenty-fourth. They are both in the, in week five of their thirteen-week field training program, and they are progressing as expected. Uh, currently Kyle Barr is assigned to Platoon Two, Patrolman, uh, Grenal is assigned to Platoon Three. Earlier today, I, I wanted to give you an update on the, the Allegheny River Project, and I provided the Alderman with a map of the uh, catch spaces that are being monitored for flow in I and I, and this will be up on the website tomorrow. So we have uh, uh, there's nine, nine places, and this is part of the five hundred thousand dollars that the state is uh, is running for us. But they're at uh, uh, from the lift station on Martha Avenue, uh, let's see, connecting, uh, oh, this is connecting, uh, Union York and East Riverside Sewers to Siphon. On Union, uh, Riverside Drive, uh, Manhole Upstream from Lift Station, South Four Street, uh, south of the intersection Green, Second Manhole Upstream from Pump House on Branch Rock. Uh, the uh, N F A, I'm not sure what that is, uh, First Manhole Upstream from Lift Station on East Lake, Second Manhole West of Union Street on Sewer Line, North of Green Street, North Union, Second Manhole South of Henley, and First Manhole Upstream of Pump House on East Side of area located in Olean Creek. So this information will be up on the website tomorrow. Uh, so I provided it to all the Alderman. So I also want to report that we had a scheduled meeting today with the task force, which is with the Seneca Nation. And uh, at the last minute, the president, I called away, uh, president sent it down to another matter. So uh, they asked us to reschedule the meeting, which we will be doing. So, and it's uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, miss awareness communication?
None.
Uh, city official reports?
None.
Proposed legislation and referrals.
P L number one eleven dash twenty-five by President Robinson referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. P L number one twelve dash twenty-five by Mayor Ailio referred to regular meeting Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. P L number one thirteen dash twenty-five by Alderman Benyon referred to regular meeting Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. P L number one fourteen dash twenty-five by Alderman Benyon referred to regular meeting Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. P L number one fifteen dash twenty-five by Mayor Ailio referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. P L number one sixteen dash twenty-five by Mayor Ailio referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. P L number one seventeen dash twenty-five by Mayor Ailio referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. P L number one eighteen dash twenty-five by Mayor Ailio referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. P L number one nineteen dash twenty-five by Mayor Ailio referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. P L number one twenty dash twenty-five by Alderman Benyon referred to regular meeting Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. P L number one twenty-one dash twenty-five by council Alderman Benyon referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. P L number one twenty-two dash twenty-five by Alderman Crawford referred to regular meeting Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. P L number one twenty-three dash twenty-five by Mayor Ailio referred to committee of the whole Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five by council president. P L number one twenty-four dash twenty-five by Mayor Ailio referred to regular meeting Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president. And lastly, P L number one twenty-five dash twenty-five by Mayor Ailio referred to regular meeting Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five for resolution by council president.
Is that the most we've ever had, fifty?
Most I have.
We haven't had, we don't, we haven't had a day. Alright, financing bills?
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the city of Olean as per list submitted to each Alderman and recommends payment thereof. Whereas the auditor has presented to the common council bills and claims against the city of Olean totaling two million eight hundred two thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-nine cents for the budget and recommends payment thereof. Now therefore be it resolved that the same be and are hereby audited and allowed. And the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof at the amount set opposite each respective claim.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Uh, good, uh, motion, I thought someone was raising their hand, okay. Alright, uh, motion by Benyon?
Aye.
Second by McCall. Clerk, please call a roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Kerry?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney, absent. Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Six ayes and one absent. Resolution number forty-one dash twenty-five revised, P L number forty-one dash twenty-five by Alderman Anastasia, seconded by Alderman Kerry. Resolution establishing, establishing the standard, standard workdays pursuant to New York State and Local Retirement System Regulation Number three one five point four.
Alright, this one, uh, New York State requested, uh, revisions to the original resolution. This will be the third time, so hopefully this one will go through. Any questions or comments? Alright, uh, same note, uh, please call a roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Kerry?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six ayes. Resolution number eighty-five dash twenty-five, P L number eighty-seven dash twenty-five by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Benyon, to authorize the removal of unused non-working lighting on North Union Street. This resolution needs five votes.
Okay, um, I have something I want to say on this, uh, might take a little bit. Uh, Tiffany, I'll give you this afterwards. Uh, do you want to explain why? Would you like to explain why, Mayor, or?
I'm sorry.
Would you like to explain why this one was back in front of the council, or?
Uh, I can, I provided, uh, yeah, I provided the council with the, with the information on this. I'm taking this action for several reasons. The city has financially invested in the project. Majority of North Union Street merchants and businesses would like to see the project through to completion. The addition of defensive lights are in line with the downtown revitalization initiative to make Olean Business District vibrant and mighty. Uh, one Alderman who was on site during the testing suggested that due diligence on the testing was not complete. Finding the common council is not giving the Department of Public Works the opportunity to come up with a plan for the lighting and the current lights, uh, might be salvageable in the future.
Alright, uh, before I give any to other council members, uh, anything, I think I speak on behalf of everyone, or, or at least the majority. Um, I completely understand why the mayor would disapprove of the resolution, but for me, it just seems to be a huge waste of time and energy. And, and I just want to state some facts here. First, we are talking about keeping a string of Christmas lights that look as though they were bought at Home Depot and being used as with makeshift equipment. Um, this is at a cost that we still don't know yet, and to get these lights to run with no guarantees and no warranties. Uh, the reluctance from our own city electrician and D P W director were both heard by the council via email and in committees. Uh, the irony is that the council is constantly told that we don't listen to the department heads. Uh, we, they've spoken and now we've listened. Uh, in the mayor's notice of this approval letter, it says that the common council, quote, "The common council has not given the D P W director the opportunity to come up with a plan for the lighting," end quote. Coincidentally, three weeks ago, had, three weeks had gone by since the council's request for an alternative. In contrast, the city managed to have six P Ls on airport stuff on our agenda in one week's time. Uh, revisiting this timeline, this has been pending litigation for so long, we've all lost track on what this failed project has been. But I, from my recollection, it started back in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Uh, August twelfth of this year, to save face from the sales fail project, the P L was presented uh, for removal of these lights, and it was mentioned that the downtown business owners are now starting to consider this an eyesore. On September ninth was the third time postponing while waiting for the testing. Uh, this started sometime in July. Uh, September twenty-third, it was mentioned that there were five of seventeen lights that did not work. There were quality issues with equipment, and it appears the lights were residential grade, that's a quote, and not designed for what was promised. Uh, this is the same night the council requested the city to look into an alternative, commercial grade lighting. Uh, the D P W director mentioned that an R F P may be needed. On ten seven, the council was informed that the city was still working on an alternative solution. On ten fourteen, resolution eighty-five dash twenty-five passed to remove the old lights, uh, five to two. Uh, the council stated again, which seemed unanimous, uh, unanimous, that we wanted the city to work on an alternative solution, as everyone in this council was interested in decorative lighting on North Union Street. It was also mentioned on numerous occasions in our discussions that this one was a bad investment, and we're looking to acknowledge that and move forward. Uh, regarding this veto passing or failing, too much time has been spent on this failed project, and here we are voting on this again. As far as I'm concerned, this council requested a solution to alternative lighting, which should have been the priority dating back to September twenty-third when the council made the formal request. Instead, ten days later, we received a veto letter. Uh, this is a rhetorical question. What is the current status of the council's request from September twenty-third, which was to find an alternative? We're gonna assume nothing. So with that, uh, if you're voting yes, you're voting to keep the same old commercial lighting, adding more money and guesswork equipment with the hopes that it will work with no warranty. If you're voting no, then we're asking the city again to bring an alternative to the council, considering we have funding to get a much better decorative system that our downtown district, city residents, and potential visitors can enjoy and move on from this failed project. So with that, any other councilmen have anything to add to that?
Yeah, uh, I was just checking my, my emails. I got an email here that was addressed to, uh, all of us. On October eleventh, it was addressed to Vernon Robinson, Leamaliel, Tiffany Taylor, and the Alderman. And it's from James Sprague. He says, "Hi y'all, we better move this out for a month. I'm only halfway through the email log and the list of things to do is so long." I did have a conversation at the Nikon D V W school with a lighting vendor who came to help us test our existing string of lights about these questions, and he believes we can make changes that will improve the lighting. Dave Cam, our city electrician, has also looked at the situation, and he came to the same conclusion. So I'm confident that we can put together a proposal that will allow us to move forward on this issue. So this was sent this, uh, October eleventh by our commissioner sitting behind me, and he asked to have it moved out a month. It's only been two weeks.
That was not the lights. That was the lighting itself on the, on the poles.
Totally different lights.
Different setup.
Isn't it the string of lights on the business reference?
What he's referring to is the L E D lights that go up and down on the street because.
That's what we were talking about.
Yeah. Changing the streetlights.
That refers primarily to pedestrian lighting that was supposed to be on the backside of each streetlight pole to light the sidewalks. Now, obviously if we end up going out for an R F P, I will blend it all together, so there'll be pedestrian lights as well as we'll look at the decorative streetlights.
And that's what, yes, that's what he told us before. So it's the actual lighting because it's dark downtown.
Yeah, and, yeah, as well as changing the heads on the existing streetlights to brighten up the streets.
So the lights that this resolution is referring to, are those Christmas lights?
Yes, that's it.
Are those repairable, fixable, usable?
Alright, th- those are the ones that, you know, we tested, I forget if it's seventeen or nineteen streams, we had seven of them that didn't work. Uh, we did have a controller that worked, but it's not rated for the outdoor use. Um, so, I mean, are they repairable? Actually, are they repairable? No, we learned that. Um, the way they're manufactured, if you blow a bulb, the whole string, it's like, uh, Christmas tree lights, right? Um, and, you know, so could, do they be made to work in perfect weather? Yes. How long will that equipment last? As President Robinson said, we don't get a warranty on it, so.
So I guess, in your professional opinion, it's probably best to get rid of these lights and get on the street.
That, I would take them down, do a new design, apparently there was a previous design that had them on the poles, and I've been told some parallel, some across the street. I don't know those details yet. So I know we, you know, we need to address the lack of lighting on the street with the regular streetlights. We should address the lack of lighting on the sidewalk on the backside because those lights got eliminated in twenty fourteen when the project was done, and then the decorative is just that, decorative.
Thank you, Director McCall.
So a couple of things, um, I don't know as I think the businesses, because I talk to them literally every week, want to see this project through to completion. I think they want to see lights that work. You know, and I would, I would question who sensed it came to light these, that there were problems with these lights, there were problems with the controllers. Which one of those businesses have said, hey, continue with this project? Because I would say they, they want lights, not necessarily what we have. Um, I think we did have a deep, uh, you know, our city electrician and D P W director that I have faith in, that have. I have faith in, that have given us direction. Um, I think that not having a warranty and potentially adding, one, one figure we had was twelve thousand dollars, um, to add that when we have so many other things, uh, that we need, I think doesn't make sense. I think city residents and merchants deserve to have lights that work with a warranty to ensure they're going to work long-term. I think that in having done a little bit more work, yet I don't know as we have pending litigation. And my understanding is that a couple of years ago, there was a meeting, um, between the mayor, Jeff Mellon, Carrie, Paula from the community, in which it was outlined where the issues were, and that part of the issue is that we were lacking some of the electricity required from down below the tracks, and that we probably are lacking some of the information that we needed to about this whole situation. So it doesn't seem like this was a project that was, um, going to be successful from, from the beginning. I certainly think that our residents and our businesses deserve more than us utilizing equipment that doesn't work and that may not work in the future. I think we need to rely on our, the people that, that have knowledge more than I do, the city electrician, our DPW director. I have faith in them providing us accurate information, and I would encourage us to really say, let's take them down, let's go forward, let's find a plan that works, something that, first and foremost, we need to have better lighting than the LED to begin with. That would make our city residents feel safer, that would make our city businesses feel safer, that would illuminate, um, in a way that probably would benefit us even more than the decorative lights. I certainly support decorative lights. Hear me when I say that. I think they look beautiful, but, um, let's look at the whole picture and figure out what we actually need.
Well said.
So referring back to the same email that Alderman, in the stage you mentioned, to the director, you say, quote, "You spoke with the lighting vendor who came into, he came in to help us test the existing sa, streetlights," and it says, "He's confident we can put together a proposal, move on with that. We can make changes that will improve the lighting." Are you saying you approve the existing decorative lighting, or remove them and replace them with new? Could this be your responsibility?
In fact, I was referring to the actual streetlights.
Oh, streetlights. Did you mention streetlights?
Yeah. Um, well, he can, he can do the streetlights also, uh, we, he thinks. The street lighting is the, sort of the main line of his business line, so he's very kind, you know, that piece of it, whether it's the streetlight or the pedestrian lights on the backside to go to the sidewalk, those are things that he does all the time, and he has a high degree of confidence we can fix those, um, issues.
Benyon?
I would certainly hope this is gonna be the last time this horse gets resurrected and be beat to death again. So, I've intentionally brought this topic up since I first got in the council sometime early twenty-three. You're right, this contract was signed, I believe, May of two thousand twenty-one. In June of two thousand twenty-four, another update was asked, and Mary Elio explained that the electrical division has been very busy and are working on the controls designed to go into the poles since what we had didn't fit, so new bases are being constructed. So, seemed like there was a plan, and then that plan never came to fruition, and then they asked for updates, they've been drug on. This thing, when people say that the, the council is laughable, it's because of a topic like this that's been beaten shit. I mean, Alderman, here he stated that four of the strands didn't work, that he was present, were you present for all of the field testing, um, outside when they tested every single strand, you questioned the city electrician's notes and said that they weren't factual, you then questioned his due diligence. Got a PE sitting there, and you got a city electrician who's telling you to stop spending money on these, and we're going to question their expertise, or say that we could just do it with a Home Depot box. There's nobody on this council that has the expertise of those two. We just need to listen to them, be done with it. Four out of five members that voted to take them lights down were all on record last meeting, stating, "Love's the idea of having lights. I want to see lights." Dave Anastasia, "I want to see lights." Alderman Robinson, Alderman Benyon, all four of us stated, "We want to see lights." What I don't want to do is continuously put money into something that's broken in hope that it's going to get fixed. We want to see lights. We are not comfortable spending fifteen thousand dollars and hoping that we can hodgepodge the lights, and then bringing this back up in hope of vetoing it. It's laughable. Just start anew, get something that works with a warranty.
All right, with that, I'm assuming...
I'm raising my hand, but you can't see. So, um, so, yeah, like, like many of you, I think we're all on the same page with adding decorative lights, uh, to North Union Street. Um, personally, I do see it as a key feature of downtown's infocation. Uh, over recent months, I've consistently expressed, as we've talked about this, and beat the horse to death, that I would like to either see if we could properly update the current installation. If that's not possible, then install an entirely new setup. Um, and I think this request is fairly straightforward. I think we've clearly communicated this. However, much like delayed installations, another fiasco is over at Cornus Park. It has been installed and left unfinished for years. Now, while I agree that some of this was associated with the litigation, back and forth with the consultant, and, you know, the, the idea that we could save a buck by doing this internally, it appears that our internal resources are either unwilling or unable to suggest the proper way to complete this. So, uh, we did have an external professional who suggested he might be able to retrofit it, but that seems less likely now. Uh, Cornus Park has remained incomplete for nearly three years after receiving the county funds for the new field lights. Um, and in order to make significant cross progress on that project, we had to outsource a key part of that to Kelker Electric. For North Union Street and larger projects, I think the important part is to bring in commercial electricians for their, uh, you know, bring in a Kelker, get them to give us a professional opinion and a strategy, um, so then we can move forward with the RFP to either retrofit or more likely, replace. And as for this reconsideration of this PL before us, just to clearly state, Vernon, just so everybody's on the same page, I'm, Mr. President, I'm sorry, uh, you said, if you vote yes, it is to, I just wanted to clarify that, um, and maybe you could reiterate it when you vote, if you vote yes, it's in favor of the original PL. If you vote no, it's against the original PL. Um, but I still feel that the most efficient way, uh, when we talk about efficiencies and savings of the city, that we do everything at once, whether it's to remove it, retrofit, replace, rather than to dismantle now, and hopefully return months later for a new installation. And, and I just want to reiterate, my biggest concern is, uh, totally agree with what most have said, the lights need, I think it's, it's a part of the vision, they need to go up, but I'm concerned that once they come down, nothing will ever be put back up. Thank you.
All right, with that, will the clerk be called? I'm sorry.
Do you want to reiterate or sign your position?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was... Give me a minute now, because we were going on. You know, I think one is we, we don't want to blend a concern from one part with, with this. Um, I agree that having maybe Kelker come on and look at what we, um, might do going forward, and as our DPW director said, and this is what I was going to say, is he wasn't saying, "Hey, we're going to run out there and pull these babies down now." What he said is, as we put up Christmas lights and as we put up directions, that we would take those down, no added expense, right? And that the ones that weren't on poles where there were lights, we'll just take those down separately, but that we're not going to go out and expend additional resources or anything. To John's point, I do agree that historically, things get lost, you know, and that I don't think by leaving the lights up there as a visual reminder of a failed project is going to encourage us to, or the city, to do it quicker. But I do think that this body in the city is, historically, taken a long time to get things done, and we do need to make sure that we keep that, um, if this goes forward, that we keep that on our radar to say, better lighting for the streetlights and the pedestrian, looking to get, um, lights that will, that are attractive and kind of, um, are inviting to our downtown. So I think that we just, but I don't think we leave them up there for everybody to, because for gosh sakes, I have received more questions about these lights than anything else other than the fire pits, which I'm so grateful when they start working. So I hope that we are done with this as of today.
All right. You guys want?
I do want to just jump back to Simon's point. We have been talking a lot about these lights since they're up, so I'm just, and, and, and the other point is that maybe, you know, we do have a small electric division, right? And, and although, I don't know, I forget the expression, right, but it's like, uh, we have the best intentions, we try to, you know, try to stretch taxpayer money by doing things internally, and, um, especially with larger projects, and, and maybe that's not the best way, obviously, right? And I, that's the only reason I brought up Cornus, was that's a large-scale project that we've tried to mostly do internally, that has required external work to, to, you know, and consultants to come in. So, um, that, that's my only point there. Thank you.
Carrick?
Just to reiterate what John said, he wanted you to clarify the yes versus no, what the implications of each of these votes are. Am I correct?
I didn't say anything. If you are voting yes, you are voting to keep the same non-commercial lighting, add more money, and guesswork equipment with the hopes that it will work with no warranty.
That's not part of it.
I mean, I was, it's opposite.
If you are voting yes, you are voting to remove the lights. If you are voting no...
So, in, in my, in my backwards brain thinking, I was the other way around, and so therefore, if you're voting no, that's what that would mean. And then if you're voting yes, we are still asking the city to bring an alternative to the council, considering we have funding to get a much better decorative system that our down district, downtown district, city residents, visitors can all enjoy. So we got that stream, though.
Yes, is to override the veto, no, it's not.
Yes, to override the veto. You got that, Joe?
All right. Thanks, John. Anything else on this? I really hope not. We're getting frustrated. All right. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
No.
Alderwoman, twenty. I'm sorry. Absent. Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
No.
Alderman Anastasia?
No.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution fails with three i's. Resolution number one oh eight dash twenty-five, PL number one ten dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alderman Benyon, seconded by Alderman Carey, to amend the City of Ole Miss and Code of Ordinances to remove section ten dash twenty-seven ambulance board.
All right, this one has been discussed. Uh, any questions? All right, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six i's, one absence. Resolution number one oh nine dash twenty-five, PL number one eleven dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Anastasia, to reschedule the November eleventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Ole Miss Common Council till to Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
All right, this one is going to be discussed.
Was there not a request to move the other one to?
That one hasn't been published.
Okay.
So we're just going to go to the article.
Okay.
All right. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Benyon?
No.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes. Yes.
Both, what?
Yeah. It was, it was one, one was no, one was yes, so I was canceling myself.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes, five a's, one day. Resolution number one ten dash twenty-five, PL number one twelve dash fifteen, uh, let's put that to twenty-five, to award the municipal building elevator renovation contract to Bison Elevator Service Incorporated, and to authorize the transfer of funds associated with said contract.
All right, this one was discussed in committees. Any questions or comments? Uh, saying none? Who may need sponsors? Yes, for... Sponsored McCall and Carey? All right, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one eleven dash twenty-five, PL number one thirteen dash twenty-five, authorizing the installation of a light pole and streetlight on Queen Street near its intersection with Bishop Street, and to authorize the modification of an existing light on pole NG two on Seneca Avenue.
This one is to discuss in committees. Any questions or comments? Uh, sponsors?
Yes.
Okay. Benyon and Carey? Uh, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Abstained.
Resolution passes, five a's, one absence, one extension. Resolution number one twelve dash twenty-five, PL number one fourteen dash twenty-five, to authorize the installation of a, of stop signs on Starbus Lane at its intersection with Sunrise Drive and on Gemini Drive at its intersection with Sunrise Drive.
All right, this one too was discussed in committees. Uh, as a public safety issue, uh, any questions or comments on this one? Saying none. Uh, sponsor? Benyon and our second? Clerk, please call a roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one thirteen dash twenty-five, PL number one fifteen dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alderman Robinson, I'm sorry, President Robinson, seconded by Alderwoman McCall, to authorize the mayor to execute a lump-sum consultant agreement between CNS Engineers Incorporated and the City of Ole Miss for the design portion of the Security Gate Improvements Project at Decatur August County Ole Miss Airport.
All right, any questions on this one? Saying none. Uh, will the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one... Resolution number one fourteen dash twenty-five, PL number one sixteen dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alderman Carey, seconded by President Robinson, to authorize the mayor to execute a lump sum consultant agreement between CNS Engineers Incorporated and the City of Ole Anne for the design portion of the Automated Weather Observing System, AWOS, project at the Cataragus County Ole Anne Airport. All right, this has been discussed. Any questions? Saying none, will the clerk please call a roll? Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alder Woman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one fifteen dash twenty-five, PL number one seventeen dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alderman Anastasia, seconded by Alder Woman McCall, to authorize the mayor to execute a lump sum consultant agreement between CNS Engineers Incorporated and the City of Ole Anne for the design portion of the Terminal Building Septic Improvements Project at the Cataragus County Ole Anne Airport. All right, this one is to discuss in committee of all. Any questions? Saying none, will the clerk please call a roll? Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alder Woman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one sixteen dash twenty-five, PL number one eighteen dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alderman, uh, President Crawford and Alderman Carey, to authorize the mayor to execute a cost-plus fixed-fee consultant agreement between CNS Engineers Incorporated and the City of Ole Anne for the construction inspection portion of the automobile parking and lighting improvements project at Cataragus County Ole Anne Airport. Just making sure, uh, Robinson, Carey. Uh, any question or comment? Saying none, I will, clerk please call a roll. Alderman Benyon? Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alder Woman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one seventeen dash twenty-five, PL number one nineteen dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alder Woman McCall, seconded by Alderman Anastasia, to authorize the mayor to execute a cost-plus fixed-fee consultant agreement between CNS Engineers Incorporated and the City of Ole Anne for this construction inspection portion, portion of the apron rehabilitation project at Cataragus County Ole Anne Airport. All right, this one is discussed. Uh, any questions or comments? Uh, saying none, will the clerk please call a roll? Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alder Woman, uh, excuse me, Alder Woman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution one eighteen dash twenty-five, PL number one twenty-two dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alderman Benyon, seconded by, uh, President Robinson, to require the Department of Public Works request an extension for grant funding associated with the EV charging station project, to require a timeline, updated work plan, and budget be presented to the common council, and to authorize and direct the Director of Public Works to contact National Grid regarding grant funding for running electric supply lines to the EV charging station locations. All right, this one was discussed in committees. Uh, do we have any questions or comments?
Hi. So, I have a question for, um, just a question. And, um, did this one break to resolution? Did this actually, I don't believe this had sponsors, did it?
You mentioned Crawford and Robinson. I've been, I have Benyon and Robinson out of committee.
This wasn't discussed in committee.
This was, this was, this was. I'm sorry. Any charges?
This wasn't discussed last week.
This was discussed in committees. We discussed this last week. Yeah.
And it wasn't discussed in committee at the whole, so there's, no, there's no sponsors.
No, not committee at the whole committees.
So, we need sponsors as well here in death.
I thought it was brought, brought out of committees with sponsors.
No, there were no sponsors.
Correct.
Okay, we need sponsors then. John?
So, Mr. President, if I may, um, so yeah, we, we just discussed this in Strategic Planning, um, committee, uh, I brought forward to everyone and sent, we've been forward a resolution tonight. Um, so I shared this information with everyone a week ago, um, despite the fact that we were, you know, on four different DPW directors, no fault of Director Spray, he's still getting acclimated to all the projects we had going on, but the three previous have all, all assured us that an extension would have been completed and filed, and that this project would be moving forward by now, um, and now we're at risk of losing this funding. I believe it's crucial for us to secure the five hundred thousand dollar grant for our downtown EV chargers that will essentially fully fund the project, um, cities that provide this service in their downtown demonstrate revenue foot tracker. Uh, so I, I, I still believe that this is a very valuable, uh, opportunity for us to pursue. And I'd like to sponsor, thank you.
Yep. All right, any follow-up? Saying none, uh, John has made the motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Carey? Uh, will clerk please call a roll? Alderman Benyon? Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alder Woman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one nineteen dash twenty-five, PL number one twenty-three dash twenty-five, out of committee by Alder Woman McCall, seconded by Alderman Carey, to authorize the mayor to sign and submit a grant application to Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services State and Local Cyber Security Grant Program. All right, this was discussed, uh, previous meeting. Any questions, comments? Saying none, uh, will the clerk please call a roll? Alderman Benyon?
Ready? Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alder Woman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one twenty dash twenty-five, PL number one twenty-four dash twenty-five, to authorize the mayor to sign the Ole Anne Police Patrol Union Labor Contract. All right, any questions or comments on this one? All right, saying none, uh, aren't there any sponsors?
No sponsors.
Sponsor from McCall, seconded by Anastasia. Will the clerk please call a roll? Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alder Woman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimously. Resolution number one twenty-one dash twenty-five, PL number one twenty-five dash twenty-five, to authorize the mayor to sign the Ole Anne Police Command Union Labor Contract. All right, uh, any questions or comments on this one? All right, saying done, I'll need sponsors for this one.
I'll sponsor.
All right, Carey, now second. Uh, will the clerk please call a roll? Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Carey?
Yes.
Alder Woman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Crawford?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Robinson?
Yes.
And the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That was a wonderful. All right, uh, so before we move into public comment, uh, have anything from all the persons?
Real quick, I just want to thank all the businesses that, um, supported the kids in our community. We had a wonderful trick-or-treating for the shops on Union and, um, a couple of the shops on, um, East State and West State. We had a good couple hundred kids, if not more. Um, the businesses were really appreciative of everybody coming out, and it would be our hope to make this an annual event.
Just to piggyback on that, I totally agree, and, uh, I wish the city would do, uh, what they did over COVID. Uh, I, I thought that was, uh, successful, I thought it was entertaining, and I actually dressed up for Halloween, which I never, ever, ever, I didn't even do with my kids, and I did it two years in a row with the city. So, uh, hopefully that's something that we can maybe do in the future, and, uh, yeah, I absolutely love that, that idea, the kids coming through downtown district and, uh, and opening that up, so. Uh, any other questions or any comments from the council? Good. All right, uh, will the clerk please read the public comments here? Public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is to establish, is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices. All right, uh, at this time, anyone from the public can come up and state your name, address, and you will have three minutes. Uh, please be respectful of everyone's time.
Okay.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Price, one twenty-six Artland Avenue, and I'm here to personally thank Mr. Benyon for finally getting my handicap sidewalk taken care of that's taken five years to do. Um, I've had a lot of comments on how sad it was that it took that long, but I just wanted to make sure, you know, he kept me in contact, emails, knew what was going on, and I just wanted to thank him for finally getting it done, so, thank you.
Lenwell Little Valley, um, first of all, I totally forgot to write about something you did at the, a couple meetings ago, which was to support Nick Ling, were these ban, federal ban on state bans on natural gas and new construction that will be coming up for next week's meeting. Um, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for the updates on the sewage discharge issue, and rather than trying to change two-thirds of my speech tonight because I didn't bring my laptop, I'm going to read it as if you never said any of that. Um, on September twenty-third, the mayor stated that he would post the revised DEC consent order on the city website and added jokingly, but not by tomorrow. While he certainly wasn't joking, it took almost a month for that consent order to be posted. I've said something like this before, why would anybody up for reelection choose to look so ineffective? Maybe the residents of Ole Anne won't notice, but we'll find out next Tuesday if they've been paying attention or not. The idea of posting updates on the city's site is many months old now, and it's not all that I had hoped it would be. It should have been a tool for transparency and a way to keep residents informed about what the city has been doing to solve the sewage discharge issue. I didn't think bi-weekly updates were too much to ask for on this important issue, but it turned out to be more of a half-hearted effort. Other than the DEC consent order, there hasn't been a posting since August. So, we still haven't heard about the progress Rambo engineering has made with the flow measurements, even though there must be a fair amount of data collected by now. Are they still on track? Have they made any surprising discoveries? The public doesn't know because the effort to keep them informed has been so minimal. And again, thank you very much for remedying that, Mayor. Sitting in this room for almost two years, watching how the city has addressed this issue has honestly been disappointing. So much more could have been done and done sooner, and if it had been, then the city would likely not have been fined by the DEC. The twenty thousand dollar fine has been reduced to seven thousand dollars, assuming the city will cooperate as the DEC steps in and takes charge of the issue. And the mayor doesn't have to pay that fine, it is city residents who will pay it. While seven thousand dollars isn't all that much compared to the city's budget, that's still about four hundred and fifty hours of work city taxpayers had to do to earn that money. Since it was the mayor's inaction that led to the violation fine, will he do anything to provide restitution to the residents? And I'll leave that hanging. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, at this time, we propose a comment statement, a session called, please represent us, or make a motion.
Second.
By McCall?
I'm.